Katerina and Chris came to me looking for their first home.
Whether it was finding a house or a mortgage broker, Rebecca helped us through every step of the process of buying a home. We highly recommend Putnam Real Estate.
Whether you're looking for your first home, an investment property, or need to sell, our professional agents and brokers will save you time and money. We're familiar with the local building, zoning, and conservation codes, as well as the financing rules for first-time homebuyers. Our success comes from your satisfaction.
My name is Rebecca Putnam, broker-owner of Putnam Real Estate. If you're looking to buy or sell, Putnam Real Estate is here for you.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth Home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item, we have our announcements, and I have a few that I'd like to give. First is just to let the board and the public know that next Monday, we'll be having discussion on the snow removal operations of last year and what the plans are for this year. And so if people are interested in hearing that report from Mr. Jack, that will be next Monday. I also have on the agenda a question to the board as to whether the board wants to consider the possibility of abandoning the easement at the Seacoast Shores Road and Baywater Drive. And we'll have that discussion. Third is an announcement of a, and this was also announced at town meeting, but I wanted to add our sadness and grief over the passing of George Hampson. George Hampson was a longtime Hooey scientist, educator. He was the, served on various committees and boards in town. He was the timekeeper often for town meeting, but also he was the tone setter. He was a very gentle, kind person who knew how to communicate positively with people. You could disagree with him, and you could, he would still respect you for your different points of view. And our thoughts and prayers go with Barbara, Todd, and David at this time. Mr. Patterson, I think you also had a story you want to add to us about George.
Yes, the phrase I remember George saying is, "I need your help." And he actually called me twice since I've become a selectman to ask for that help. One was, come down and actually watch him go through his water sampling in West Falmouth Harper, and basically educate me on the process of studying that estuary and its eutrophication over many, many years, because he, you know, in a disciplined fashion, did the testing and kept records over a long period of time. And the second incident was just this early slump this past summer. He said, "Look, there is a railing that's missing on the dinghy rack at McGannson Harbor." And I said, "I'll go down there, I'll take some pictures." And sure enough, he was right. And it was somewhat dangerous. If you're not familiar with that particular ramp that goes out to the dinghy dock, there's a rock breakwater, no, not breakwater, but armament that goes steeply down to the water. And if you fell off of that dock going out to it, you'd be in rough shape. At any rate, very quickly, I brought it to Julian's attention, and the Department of Public Works went and repaired it. But that was George, you know, just kind of looking out for the long-term interest of the town, not just for his own initiatives. And I certainly do miss him.
One of the things you always knew, north down with when election was happening, his house was right across from the voting place, and everybody's sign was up at his house because he was wanting to make sure people got support and people went out and voted. And you would see if there were five people running, all five signs would often be at his house, because he just wanted to be supportive that way. And so if we could just take a moment of silence and give our prayers to Barbara, to Todd, and David this time. And I also do want to take a moment of silence in thinking about the prayers of the people of Paris. It's a horrible situation that happened on Friday evening, and it's something for us to take some time to think about where we live and how fortunate we are, and we cannot take the securities and freedoms we have for granted. But I would also like to be able to spend a moment to, however spiritually we can send our thoughts and hopes to the people of Paris.
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman, could I just note that we've placed a peace lily at the reception desk here at Town Hall in sympathy for the victims of that tragic terrorist attack in Paris as well? So I wanted to note that. Thank you.
Any other announcements from the board? Now time for public comment. If anyone has something they'd like to comment on, an item that's not on our agenda, then please restrict your comments to two minutes. Mr. Dinen, please.
Phil Dinen, Precinct 5. Mr. Chairman, just a follow-up from the October 26 meeting, and we asked a question about the hookup on 53 Hunt Street in New Silver Beach, if they were going to be allowed to be hooked up based on Town Council's ruling. No additional hookups based on 200 homes that are already on there. I haven't heard the answer to the answer of that.
My understanding is that they, when they purchased the house, paid for one, that property, they did pay for one betterment that wasn't concluded within the hookups in the original sale.
Okay, so they are part of the group?
Yeah, part of the original program. Yeah.
Thank you, that is correct.
Okay, any other public comment? All right, our next item is to approve minutes. We first have the public session minutes of October 19, 2015. Any changes or suggestions? Mr. Patterson?
Just to mention that there were two name changes, these typos, that I gave to Jennifer. One was Laura instead of Mara, and the other one is Finns instead of Finns.
Okay. This is for Laura Monahan?
Right.
And for the Finns, on page eight?
T-H-I-N-D-S.
Okay. With those two corrections, any other changes?
Motion to approve with those corrections.
We have motion, second, to approve with those corrections. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, the ayes have it. Next is the public session of October 26.
I move approval.
Yeah, motion, second for approval. All those in favor, say aye.
And to release?
No, this is the public.
Oh, the public, yeah. Sorry. Which one is that?
October 26.
October 26. Okay, I've got to find it. I've got it in order.
Pack it in a little bit out of order.
I guess.
I just wanted to do the public ones first, and then the executive. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, the ayes have it. Next is the October 19th Executive Session. Item number one, pending litigation with Mass DEP and Brazos Bay Coalition.
I move approval.
Second. And to not release.
Are we actually, we...
And not release.
I actually thought we were petitioning we might be able to release this one.
We can check them up for next time.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
For item number one.
Oh, just for item number one. Right.
Because this is a settlement that we are going to be signing very soon, but we'll double-check on that, so.
Yeah, we'll double-check.
Approve right now, and we'll check on releasing or not next time.
I didn't review it with that in mind, so I'd say we better just hold off on that till we screen it a little more closely.
Okay, so we're going to hold off on that item. Item number two is to consider the terms and condition of lease with teamship authority.
Oh, same thing. Question, that has not been concluded yet.
It has.
It has.
It has been signed by both parties, it can now be, so this can be released.
Then a motion to approve and to release. Second.
We motion to approve and release these. Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Next is still October 19th, litigation discussing pending wind turbine litigation, item three. Any corrections?
I move approval, but not to release.
All those in favor?
Second.
I'm sorry, we have motion, second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. And the October 26th, sixth Executive Session, the impact bargaining update for the Consolidated Communications Center. And it is still ongoing.
I move approval, not to release.
Second.
We have motion, second, to approve and not release. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. How are we doing for warmth now? Are we going too far?
Much better, thank you.
It's fine.
Okay. Great.
We'll give it 10 more minutes.
It went up pretty quickly though, Mr. So, so we did a good job with that.
Indeed.
All right, next summary of actions, dealer licenses. The first is application for a new second-hand dealer license in Consignment Classics.
Motion to approve.
I'm going to read through these five, and this is anyone who wants to hold any of these. So we have the second-hand deal license, Consignment Classics, a special agricultural liquor license for the Westport Rivers Vineyard and Winery, for the Falmouth Farmers Market Holiday Market, and this is just the Tuesday, 11/24 date that we added two weeks ago. The next is a special agricultural liquor license, Coastal Vineyards at the Mahone's Garden Center Ladies Night on Thursday, November 19, three days. Next, the application for a special one-day wine and malt liquor license, Newcomers Club Falmouth, on January 15, 2016. I do notice that their application said 2015, but I think we were all clear that they were applying on 16, in 2016. And the final one, application for a special agricultural liquor license is for the second vineyard at a winery, Cape Quad Winery, at Mahone's Garden Center Ladies Night, Thursday, November 19, 2015. Any holds on those?
No.
We obtain a motion to approve all of them?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, the ayes have it. Okay, administrative orders, and these ones I do want to take individually. The first is approval request for expenditure from the Police DARE donation account in the amount of $1,669.88 for Halloween bags for Falmouth Elementary School children.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, the ayes have it. We have approval request for expenditure from the Falmouth Fire Rescue Department donation account in the amount of $3,000 for stove top fire safety devices.
Motion to approve. Second.
I would like an explanation.
I was, I was hoping for the explanation also, so that's one reason I wanted to hold you. Find exactly what a stove top fire safety device is.
Good evening, I'm glad you asked. My name is Mel Trot, I'm the Fire Prevention Officer here for the Fire Department, and if you permit me, I'd like to give you a little background of what I like to do. Devin Smith is also with me this evening. The Fire Department's partnered with the Council on Aging to conduct or participate in the Red Cross Smoke and Carbon Oxide Detector Program. It's where a member of the Fire Department goes out with a Red Cross volunteer, we check their homes to make sure that they have working smoke and carbon oxide detectors, and if they don't have them, we'll install them, change batteries, that sort of thing. And while we're there, we'll go through a checklist and review some good fire safety habits, things like related to cooking and having a good egress path out of your house. So the reason why I'm before you is, I had recently attended a public educated conference on fire safety, and I discovered these devices that I think will be invaluable in helping some of my seniors in the town of Falmouth. And so I was hoping that if I got approval, I'd be able to purchase these, and then when I went out and did that program with the Red Cross, I could install these. So how they work is, it's just a magnet, it installs under, you need two, they install under the kitchen hood, and if there's a fire, there's a little fuse here that ignites, and it sprays chemicals and puts the fire out. Now, I'll be honest with you, I saw these a few years ago, and I thought they were a gimmick. But that being said, I discovered while I was at this conference that there are other communities in the Commonwealth that have these installed, and they save people's lives. And there are other communities that are getting grants to purchase them. So, as a matter of fact, they've been around since 1972, and there are some other communities in the United States that are part of their ordinances to have them in certain housing developments. So I'd like to share some statistics with you. State and national statistics have shown that from 2007 to 2011, cooking fires were the leading cause of home structure fires. And for people over 65 years of age, cooking is the third-leading cause of fire deaths and the leading cause of injury. And unattended cooking was by far the leading contributing factor in these fires and fire deaths. So, and I can say anecdotally, although I don't have any concrete numbers from the last years of being a fire prevention officer, the one big factor in all these fire, kitchen fires that I've seen is unattended cooking. And so this, these will, in my opinion, you know, be a big help if somebody's not at their stove and there's a fire, it'll put the fire out. So I have a video, if you're interested, I'll show you. If it's any hotter in this room, that thing might go off.
I was gonna...
We're dying, we're dying.
You're watching WSBT, Channel 22 News. Firefighters say some recent upgrades at an apartment complex made all the difference when a kitchen fire erupted on someone's stove top. They only damaged some soot and some minor cleanup. In the past years, though, flames could have destroyed the entire building. WSBT's Ted Land explains how they were able to prevent the major loss. Ted?
Well, Jennifer, it all came down to a relatively inexpensive device, which worked exactly as it was designed, and it's something firefighters have been urging apartment managers to install for years.
A fire that burned out of control in June 2011 damaged several units at the Castle Point Apartment Complex, forcing renters out of their homes. Here's where firefighters think it started, on the stove top. Well, they responded to a similar called Yesterday, but by the time they got there, the fire was already out.
Between the little burners, and that's it.
Clay Fire Marshal Dave Sharon says devices called stove top fire stops installed by Castle Point last fall likely prevented a catastrophe.
What normally would have been tens of thousands of dollars with the damage, is probably going to be less than 500, probably less than $200 worth of damage.
This video from the manufacturer shows how they work. You hang the fire stops above the burners. If, for some reason, a pan ignites, the flames will trigger a fuse, and the canisters release fire suppressant. They say the system can extinguish a stove top blaze in seconds.
Those are the ones from yesterday's fire. So that's what it looks like after it is activated. 99% of kitchen fires are caused by unattended cooking, and if they can stop that, you stop the damage, it's a life, it's a property, so it's a very, very cheap insurance.
And it makes their jobs much easier.
Those fire stops sell for about $45 a pair, you need two of them to effectively cover all four burners. They also installed them at the Jefferson Apartments, where there have been some pretty significant fires in recent years. Ted Land, WSBT, Channel 22 News.
So the price is a little bit less than what this gentleman said. If you were to buy them from a distributor, they'd be like $45, $50, but to fire departments, the manufacturer said he would sell them $30 a pair. So I'd like to do enough for 100 homes, so that's where the $3,000 comes from. So, you know, Devin Smith, any information, anything you want to share?
Yeah, I mean, we've had some of our housing in town here, we've had a couple of fires that were related to kitchen activity, and those buildings have sprinkler systems, and the sprinklers have activated, and the water damage, as you can imagine, is quite extensive when you have these fires. If you had something like this that was available to some of those facilities and some of the homes that even have, some of all those buildings have a little residential sprinkler, this would, you know, might be a first line of defense before it activated a larger suppression systems and thereby keeping the damage down. And our fire prevention personnel are working with the seniors and schools and in the community, and we put out the information, and we're coming up on Thanksgiving, that's the biggest, you know, season for us, for kitchen incidences. So, you know, we can't support them enough, and they're endeavoring to try and get out there and help the community. They've been partnering up with the Red Cross, and we think it's a great, you know, opportunities for us to get out there and do some more, so I think that's really hit something big here for us to get out there and help everybody.
Well, it certainly would have helped me when I was 25, but... Once you would exhaust the ones that you were able to purchase for the 3,000, where would a homeowner get one?
Well, I have literature at the fire station, so I can, I have plenty of that stuff, I can...
They'd have to be ordered, they're not sold commercially, yes?
They are sold commercially, they are. Not like at a box store or anything like that, but there are distributors that sell them, and I have a list of those distributors.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Patterson?
Maybe a suggestion would be put it on your website, so people can access it that way.
Yes, that's a good idea. Okay, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, can we have motion, a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, the ayes have it. Okay, next item is to accept the donation from the Wild Harbor Estates Homeowners Council trust the amount of $1,000 to the Beach Department donation account.
I move approval.
Second.
This is covering, right? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, the ayes have it. Spend it wisely, Mr. Hoffler. Next is to accept the donation from the Falmouth Art Market in the amount of $2,000 to the Falmouth Cultural Council.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, the ayes have it. Next is to approve a license agreement between the Town of Falmouth and Dillingham Square Condominium Association for the installation and maintenance of bicycle racks.
I move approval.
Second.
I have a question.
Yep.
And the Town Council, Duffy's, and Walter with us, but I was wondering whether there's not an issue of these bike racks essentially becoming what is categorized as fixed to the land, such that if SCTV moved on to another location, these bicycle racks essentially still belong to property ownership? So I don't know whether that's an issue or not, I mean, I don't foresee any issues, but I thought I'd mention it.
It would be addressed in the licensing agreement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it says the town will remove the bicycle racks if the DFCA revokes it. So they would go with the town.
Okay.
Motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, the ayes have it. Next is authorized town manager to spend up to $10,500 to be expended from Article 17. This is from the April 2011 town meeting, member, town meeting, to pay a portion of the study of the Munichus Quashnet sub watershed.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Well, I was wondering whether we might have an explanation, I see some representatives...
Mr. Patrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Water Quality Committee has approved this, recommended it for you, for your approval. This is a very important part of the Wacoit Bay watershed, and we need this information to further the cleanup process. It will enable us to look at tidal restrictions in the Quashnet-Munichus River. It will also allow us to look at phosphorus management in the upper reaches, which is largely freshwater, and it will enable us to consider shellfish propagation as a way to clean up the problems there. But right now, it is, it is suffering from nutrient loading, more so than other parts of Wacoit Bay, and it's more restricted, more tidally restricted. So there's been a lot of speculation about how to improve it. This will confirm the best ways to do that, and it is a follow-on to the original Mass Estuaries Project report that was done in 2013 with data from 2004. But this is also a very significant waterway because it is the largest source of fresh water into Wacoit Bay, and it's also the site of internationally famous trout, Brook Trout Restoration Project, that's been ongoing for probably 40 years by Trout Unlimited. So it's, and it's working, so it's, it would be great to bring this estuary back to its original clean status.
Question, Matt, is this is one of the watersheds we share with Mashpee?
Yes.
And they're contributing to this as well.
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. This is going to be shared by Mashpee, at least if we're to get the other half of the funding from the water collab, the county water collaborative. They've agreed to fund half of this $41,000 cost if the towns of Falmouth and Mashpee chip in their part. And as a way of acting as a kind of a catalyst, the Citizens for the Protection of Wacoit Bay, which I'm a member of, has voted to chip in $2,500, and also the Mashpee Environmental Coalition is considering a contribution. So it's a public-private thing, and I think that helped, and Susan can confirm this, she's on the Water Quality Collaborative, the County Collaborative. I think that helped with the argument that was made. It wasn't a unanimous vote.
Well, and what was interesting, it really was one of the first examples of projects that was between the towns, it was brought before the committee, and when Matt talked about, you know, the smaller, you know, public-private groups pitching in, that's what, you know, allowed that, it was that matching donation. And so I think that it's what's, you know, other than the environmental impacts, which I think are going to be terrific, you know, it's also one of the first models of how the towns can get together on shared watersheds and make great improvements with cooperative efforts, so the presentation was very helpful.
Mr. Chairman, Patterson?
You know, we're now locked into the 208 Plan, which is where municipalities are required, basically, to make steps toward, you know, denitrifying the waters of our estuaries, and we share this with Wacoit, excuse me, with Mashpee. And of course, whenever you share a body of water, the question becomes, well, who's responsible for what fraction of the nutrient loading? And so I would think that this kind of an initiative is going to help us through the testing to help identify that, and maybe make this negotiation a little bit more objective and a little less self-interest.
Exactly, and we decided to put that issue aside and just fund the project because, although the Quashnet River extends all the way up into Mashpee, the Munichus, which is the lower half, it's the same river, is all in Falmouth, in Wacoit, the other, the other village in Falmouth. So, yeah, we're happy with the way things worked out. I have tried to get through to Tom Fidala at Mashpee to find out if they've approved it. I don't think they have, but we've been working with him and some of the selectmen to get it on the agenda and make sure it does go through.
That was exactly my question, whether Mashpee had approved, because this isn't a new issue between Falmouth and Mashpee. So is the $10,500 for each community?
It's, each community would have to put up $10,500, and the county is putting up, I have those numbers here.
Twenty.
The other half, the...
Yeah.
Let's see, 21,500 is what the county's putting up.
I guess my, my question is the cooperation on the Mashpee side, because it has... I guess my, my question is the cooperation on the Mashpee side, because it has.
Oh, the, the, you mean the Mashpee Environmental Coalition? You know, I, I don't know where they are on that. They, they were very keen on, on following us, the Citizens for the Protection of Wacoit Bay. I'll have to check with them as well, but I, I don't have a firm word on that yet.
Okay.
I was just going to say, Andy Gottlieb is chair of the collaborative, is he not? And he's also a Mashpee selectman, so I would think he would be a good source of information.
Right, he had to step out for the.
He recused himself, but certainly the entire committee was, was very buoyed by the whole idea and optimistic that it would go through.
Well, we have a little more flexibility, so we have funding that we've been able to pull from 2011 to fund this right away, and Mashpee just may not have funds put aside in that way that we do.
It's interesting you brought that up, Mr. Chairman. They did vote for a large amount of money for their, their projects, and it was thought by selectman Gottlieb that that would be a source for the money. We have until, I think, July 1st to, to bring this all together, to get confirmation of funding from the towns.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Patterson?
I just want to take the opportunity to thank Matt and Eric for the leadership that you're showing in pulling this together and helping us move forward in addressing these, you know, nutrient loading problems that we've created.
Well, I, I don't want to take any credit. Our chairman has done a tremendous job, Virginia Valley Ella's done a tremendous job, and certainly Sia Cannonopoulos has, has done well, and thank you all for supporting us. I think it's, it's been great. Brings back memories, coming back to these meetings.
Okay, any further discussion? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, the ayes have it. And the next is authorized town manager to spend up to $78,000 to be expended from Article 17, April 2011 town meeting, to fund the second year of the Water Quality Management Committee Technical Consulting Contract.
Move approval.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
Just refresh my memory on that Article 17 from 2011. I know it was a major, it was a major funding article.
Correct.
Do you recall?
Several million dollars, I don't have the exact amount. I don't have the exact, but it is.
But it was in the million dollar range.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, the ayes have it. All right, moving on to special events. We have three recurring events. The first is the Third Annual Vigil for All Victims of Gun Violence.
Are we supposed to start a public hearing at 7:30?
I'm so sorry, thank you for clearing it up. So we have a public hearing, and we'll have two hearings. The first is a public hearing on the application for new officer-director, transfer of stock and new stockholder. AM Dining, Inc., doing business as the Golden Swan Indian Cuisine, 323-325 Main Street, Falmouth. On behalf of the applicant, please.
Yes, good evening. Theodore Ray Schilling, I'm an attorney from Austinville, Mass. I represent the petitioners. I think a few weeks back, you approved the transfer of the manager, and, and I actually was in the hospital at that time, so someone stood in for me. But we're seeking to, this is the Gold, the Golden Swan, it's AM Dining, Inc., and they're doing business as the Golden Swan Indian Cuisine. They've been there for quite a while on Main Street. I know the family very well, and all this is doing is the, the husband's transferring to the wife, and so nothing's going to change on it. We've, we've put in all the paperwork, and it's just a change in officer-director and transferring the stock in total from the husband to the wife.
Any questions from the board? Do we have anyone?
Just a question. When we had the hearing.
Yep.
On this particular license, so it's several weeks ago, maybe a couple months ago, was it the wife who was present at the hearing? Is that who that was?
Yes, she was present.
She was, spoke on behalf of the business.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think it was necessary to bring her tonight, and actually I spoke with somebody in your office, but this is a formality. Many times, people forget, attorneys and other people, that Chapter 138 requires you to change officers, you have to come to the board, you have to go to ABC, and I can't tell you how many people I discover after the fact, when I come to them, I say, well, did you ever get that approved? And they say no, because it's not in their head that that's the law, that's the law, and that's why I presented it this way.
Okay, I will read and direct that notice was given under Chapter 138 of General Laws, amended at AM Dining, Inc., DB, the Golden Swan Indian Cuisine, has applied for a new officer-director, transfer of stock and a new stockholder of its all-alcoholic common victual license, locate 323-325 Main Street, Falmouth. Your hearing will be held in the selectmen's meeting room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, November 16th, 2015, at 7:30 on the above application. Do we have anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this transfer and new officer-director? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? I entertain a motion from the board to close our hearing.
Someone? Second.
We have a motion in a second to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, your hearing is closed. Are we prepared to make a decision on this hearing, this occasion?
I would move approval of this application for, let's see, new officer-director and transfer of stock and a new stockholder, and also all alcoholic common victual license.
Okay, I just want to check on the victual license. I think that actually is coming up later tonight.
I'll see it.
Yep, that's under our licenses.
I'll pull that out there.
All right, so we have a motion in a second to approve the new director, transfer of stock and the new stockholder. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for following through. All right, we have another hearing scheduled for 7:45, I believe, so the fee hearing, so we'll have to hold off on that till we get to that time. So we'll go back to our special events. We have the Third Annual Vigil for All Victims of Gun Violence in Peg Noonan Park, Grandmothers Against Gun Violence on Monday, December 14th, 2015. Do we have anyone for, for the application who'd like to speak about this event? All right.
I would just say, this is the third annual event that the same people have been putting on, so I would move approval for the event.
Motion?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, the ayes have it. Okay, the next is the application for the Chase the Turkey Cross Country Run-Walk at Falmouth Academy, held in Beebe Woods. I will point out that I will be volunteering at this event.
I was going to say, is this your event?
I'm not organizing it, I'm not going to be the turkey this year. I keep trying, but I refuse. It is a fundraiser for the service center. The race actually starts at 8 o'clock. It's a $10 entry fee, so if anyone would like to come and run, a beautiful four mile run in the woods.
Do you have to wear a turkey suit to do it?
We only have one turkey that runs, and you chase after it. But then you can burn off your calories before you eat your own turkey.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, the ayes have it. Third item is the Fourth Annual Jingle Jog 5K Run and Seafaring Santa Arrival. This is sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. This will be on Saturday, December 5th, 2015.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, the ayes have it. Next, we have two new events, a beach wedding for Old Silver Beach on Saturday, August 13th, 2016, from 6:00 to 6:30 p.m. It is late enough that it does fit within our policy on beach weddings during the summer.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
Yes, I, I did think about the August 13th date, and the time is 6:30, and that's not going to conflict with any, anyone who was, is still at the beach, or I know they said to go over to the, to the public side. So that was the only thing that I thought, August 13th on a Saturday, on August 13th.
On Saturday night.
August 16th, okay. I just thought about the time and, and the fact it's Saturday and it's New Silver Beach.
And it's late.
And it's late.
Did I have a question?
Yep.
In the same vein, I noticed, oh, never mind, Mr. Hopper just left. He said in his email the 16th, whereas the request is for the 13th, so I'm just going to assume that's a typo.
Okay.
I have the same question.
All right, so never mind.
But the, I noticed that this actual form that we signed is for August 13th.
Right. And on the memorandum you're reading, there are a few other dates that are active on that, so I think it was a cut and paste, because this has the, it's going to be discussed at the March 24th, 2014. Selectmen's meeting. I think it's the application we need to worry about, which would be the 13th.
I think it's, I mean, talking about 80 to 100 people, 30 vehicles. I wish you were still here.
Well, you know, I.
Consider me feel free to carry it for a week.
We probably could, but when you think about it, it's 6:30, and most beachgoers have really, and this is the public side too, it's not the town side, and a lot of people leave. I mean, real, I know, it is still the summer season, and there could be people on the public side that stay there, so, but the vehicles aren't, I don't know.
We haven't had the request for the road race yet, so I'm not even sure exactly whether that is going to be the date.
I think it's the following weekend.
Okay, so it's not the road race weekend.
It's usually around the 20th and 90th.
Well, we kept going back and forth as to whether it's the second week or the third week.
It's the third, I think it's the third. It used to be the second.
Right.
But we don't know for sure.
This week is the first one, it's been the third for a few years, and.
That would be a reason to table it.
But I do think if it is going to be that weekend, that could be problematic, and Mr. Hopper's recommendation again does refer to the 16th, and so if he's thinking it's the Monday, the 16th, I can see where he actually would absolutely not think there's any problem, but if he.
But this says the 13th.
I know, but the letter that Don Hopper wrote refers to the 16th.
And also the police too.
So what does the calendar say? For August.
August, the Saturday is the 13th.
The Saturday is the, well, it's more than likely the Saturday.
I would propose we table this until we can actually get confirmation from Mr. Hopper.
And also regarding the road race.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So we're going to put that aside. Next item is a approval request for the waiver of enforcement of parking meters on Water Street in Woods Hole for Woods Hole Fair on Saturday, it's the Renaissance Fair on Saturday, December 5th, 2015, from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. Do we have anyone who'd like to speak on behalf of this? Do we have any questions for the?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none.
Thank you. Thanks for being here and not speaking.
That was a nice.
She knows what I'm doing.
All right, next item under business is a approval request for authorization to proceed with the submission of notice of intent to the Conservation Commission for the Perch Pond Maintenance Drudging and Beach Nursery Permit Project.
Okay, no, I'm watching the 7:45, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I did have a question on just who would perform the drudging. Is this going to be a private firm, or are we relying on the county dredge to do this work?
We have a presentation right back.
Oh, okay.
Oh, we do?
You know, I hate to say this, but just because our hearings are on scheduled time, and actually, we are going to take up the public hearing on the fees, and I should have. So I'm going to go ahead and we'll start the fee hearing. These are for the 2016 fees, and just to remind everyone, under Chapter 119, Section 2 of the Code of Falmouth, we request the fees to be subjected, submitted to us for changes by the department heads, and so the only ones that we have listed for us are proposed change fees, otherwise the fees stay the same as they have been. I'll read the public hearing notice as provided under Chapter 119 of the Code of Falmouth. A public hearing will be held in the selectmen's meeting room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, November 16th, 2015, at 7:45 p.m. to establish and promulgate fees, which are effective as of January 1st, 2016, to be charged by town departments and agencies, except as provided by Mass General Laws, the school department, planning board, library, town clerk, town treasurer, and collective taxes. The proposed changes are as follows. Ms. Moffin?
I, I think as I went through all of these and noticed the change from what it is right now and are proposed, but I don't know for how long. Is it just for the one time? Is it for a week? Is it for a year?
This is for the future until it's changed again.
Okay, so if it's a hundred dollar fee for a, I'm just going to do a private mooring, that is for one year that starts January 1st of 2016 and goes till the end of, that's a one year.
Yep, it's a one-year fee.
And it's.
And that's the minimum, what that fee actually specifically for the private mooring is, the hundred dollars is the minimum it can be charged. It's actually a per foot charge, I believe $14 per foot, at a minimum of gone from 85 to 100. So if you have a private mooring that's a larger boat, it's staying the fee exactly as it was before, it's just the minimum, used to be $85, and now it'll be $100.
And it's annual.
Yep.
Could I just make a comment? Because every year at this time, this is what we do, is we do all the fees.
Yes, yeah, I know that, yeah. No, I was concerned on the time, because there are some, as we go through this, and I think, is that for a month? Is that for a week? So we'll go through them, and then if I see that I, I think it's less than annual, I'll ask you.
So let's do it department by department. The first is under the Fire and Rescue Department. After hours and weekend inspections, currently there is no fee, and this will now be $150 per event for inspection, and for commercial re-inspections, at present, there's no fee, and there'll be now $100 of the proposed fee per inspection.
I would make a motion to approve.
Sure. Motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Okay, next is the Inspection Services Department. First is under electrical fees residential. For smoke, fire, and burglar alarms, was 35, proposed going to 50. For alterations, additions, remodeling, was 35, moving to 50. Change of service was $25 plus $10 per meter, going to a flat fee of $50. Electrical fees, commercial, service change and service only, $75 plus 10 per room was what the old charge, proposed fee is $100. Temporary service was $50, being proposed to go to 100. And the plumbing and gas combination fees, the commercial gas-fired water heater replacement was a $65 combination fee, is being changed to $35 for gas and $35 for plumbing. Any discussion on any of these changes?
Move approval.
Okay, do we have any public to comment on any of these changes? We have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, the ayes have it. Next grouping are the Marine and Environmental Services. Moorings, private fee, the minimum, private for the minimum fee going from $85 to 100, as we discussed. Tides Bulkhead, the transient commercial fishing, monthly, current there was no charge for that, and, or I don't think existed as a monthly charge, so it wasn't, there was no charge, it didn't exist before. Now they're suggesting that you could have a monthly transient commercial fishing at Tides Bulkhead of $250.
A month.
A month.
Okay.
Shellfish license is the non-resident recreational going from $85 to $100. The resident taxpayer recreational going from $25 to $30. The senior resident, and this is the one I didn't understand as to why we would make it go from $5 to $6, but I think it is being a consistent percentage increase, the difference in the others by a little percent, we would do the same thing across the board.
I move approval.
Any discussion?
Second.
Questions?
I have a question.
Of course, you have to come.
If I have to.
No, Mr. Patterson's going to bring you the microphone.
I have a simple question.
Yep.
I suspect I missed something by reading legal notices or something. Did you have this on print somewhere, so I should already arrive here knowing, knowing these changes?
It was listed in the enterprise on Friday.
Okay.
It was on our website.
All right.
In our agendas.
I missed it. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the Marine and Environmental Services fees? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. And finally, this is the zoning Board of Appeals. The Appeal of Building Commissioner or the Zoning Administrator, present fee was a hundred dollars, being proposed to be moved to a hundred and fifty dollars. Any discussion?
Move approval.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. The ayes have it.
Thank you, guys.
All right, back to our presenters. From the Perch Pond Maintenance Group.
We haven't sp- oh, is that the second page?
That was the explanation for the, uh-
Okay.
Actually, about that, yep.
All right, sorry, thank you for the, uh- Patients been waiting for our delay on that. So, presentation on the Perch Pond Preservation Project. If you introduce yourself and tell us what you know.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Brad Holmes. I'm with Environmental Consulting Restoration. I'm here on an application for the Perch Pond Preservation, Preservation, Inc. Along with me are members of the Perch Pond Preservation, and along with me is Mike Porcelli of Falmouth Engineering, helping me present this project. What we're looking to do is a project that was done in two thousand and one. It's the dredging of the navigation channel leading into Perch Pond. We're in the initial stages of permitting for this project. The Perch Pond Preservation, Inc. is taking this on. It was last done by the Town of Falmouth, permitted and performed in two thousand and one. We have done our due diligence. We've done our mapping and sediment analysis, and we're in the permitting stage, and we're in the attempt in submitting a notice of intent application to present to the Conservation Commission. And the Conservation Commission has asked that we present to the Board of Selectmen and get a letter of approval that allows us to submit an application, because what we're looking to do, which was done before, is use the sand that's coming from the navigation channel as beach nourishment on the Town of Falmouth beaches. So we're not necessarily looking for your approval of the project, in the sense that we know we have to come back to you after we have a permit from Conservation and get a special permit, but we're looking for your acceptance to allow us to proceed with submitting an application that can be presented to the Conservation Commission and hopefully get approval, and hopefully come back to you. I'll show you a little bit more of the project. And what we have is the navigation channel leading from Great Pond into Perch Pond. Right now, it's restricted. It restricts the safe navigation, and it restricts total flushing within Perch Pond. That's the reason why it's been done. At least in two thousand and one was the latest, it was likely done before that. I haven't done that study or have those records. There's approximately eleven hundred cubic yards of dredges material that we're looking to take out, and we're looking to place it within the Town of Falmouth Beach that leads from approximately the boat ramp up to approximately Chestnut Street. There is a significant coastal bank erosion in that area, the toe of the coastal banks, in bad shape. We did formally discuss this with the town engineer, and he thought that would be a good solution to help stabilize that eroding bank and, and help to nourish the beach. So it's, it's, in my opinion, it's a win-win for, for all, in the sense that it fixes a few environmental problems.
Just because we've heard about this so often.
Sure.
If you could mention the street, that's a long, because I want everyone out there to know we're talking about a long Great Bay Street.
Correct.
We've heard from people, Great Bay Street, about concerns about that and about that erosion, that we wanna make sure that they're hearing. This is where you're proposing, is that the sand's gonna be nourishing the beach along Great Bay Street.
Correct. The, the intent would be, and that, at that toe of the coastal bank where there's a really significant erosion, would be to use that nourishment sand in there, try to stabilize that toe, and then work back. So it would be a, not only a protection to the beach, but also the land we're up, up towards Great Bay.
Questions from the board? Sue?
Sure. How was this project conceived in, in terms of, was there an association that was put together to go ahead and look at doing the project? What do you estimate will be the cost when all is said and done?
The, the homeowners in and around Perch Pond took up this project after discussions with the Waterways Committee, that this wasn't on their to-do list. So they're, they experienced this on a routine basis, that it's getting shallower and, and navigation is severely impeded. So they took the task and formed a group, and they have the funding to move forward. As far as a, a total cost to do the actual dredging, and that hasn't been calculated yet. I don't have a number to throw out to you.
I've, I've noticed very high level of organization and communication in starting to move this project forward. So that's, I thought it was a good model for everyone to know about. So I would be interested in knowing what the cost is as you get those numbers.
We can provide that. That, we'd be happy to. They are a dedicated group. They're focused, and they're really hate to see the degradation, and they're looking to move this forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. The dredge spoils, does the Conservation Commission determine where those spoils go, or can the, the Perch Pond Preservation Group decide where the spoils would go? How does that work?
They're recommending to the Conservation Commission that it be along-
Along Great Bay Road. And how did you happen to choose Great Bay Road?
Because that's the, the location that was used previously.
Oh.
What we're trying to do is mirror the past work that's been done in the past, so that it doesn't go outside project footprints that were already performed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Do you know if that beach is used currently, or has that eroded so much that there is no beach there? If we were coming between, say, Stowers and Nickerson? I mean, is that beach still usable for neighbors?
It is walkable. I've walked it, and it isn't a great distance. I'm not sure at the higher tides, how much room is there, but it is usable and it is walkable. I was only out in the wintertime, so I don't know how often it's used, but I might be able to ask Mike.
Well, that's, um, no, I was just curious about that, and thinking about what the people, the residents, were going to be used. So I went down there today, and, and I don't think it's the easiest place to go down and say that you're going down to a beach. I mean, it's, well, it's just all, it's, it's all grown over there, so.
Well, the intent would be to improve it and make it a little bit more accessible.
Well, that's good. That's good.
But where the dredging is occurring is not big beach. It's where the nourishment's gonna go, there's more beach used. Because where dredging occurs, actually, parcels owned by the town, not private parcels, right?
Correct.
But there isn't as much erosion on Nickerson and Towers as there is further down on Harrington and going further down, yeah.
The nourishment's occurring at Nickerson and Towers, right?
Yep, yep, okay.
Correct. There's quite a bit of bank erosion as well. The beach, the, the bank is undercut, leading to the beach, so our proposal would be to fix the bank first and let, let the remaining beach get nourished from there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Just in a motion?
I would move approval.
Is this a here or first, or?
Nope.
Oh, okay. I'll second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
And next is a sign variance for off-premises signs, placed at the First Congregational Church, Town of the Academy, and John Wesley Methodist Church for the Falmouth Corral.
I move approval.
Three different concerts and three different displays.
And this has been done before.
Yeah.
Certainly were the events.
And I do appreciate that when these boards are being put up, that people are requesting permission. Motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. The ayes have it. Would you like to tell us a little bit about the event?
Go ahead to the mic.
To the mic.
Yes, to the mic.
It's a microphone, just to the television audience. It doesn't project into this room.
I see. Good enough?
That's right. That's good.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure that you have, I have extra pages here to make sure you have all the concerts that we're hoping to promote. There are four here.
We do.
Okay.
It's just part of our, our marketing for the Falmouth Corral. These, they're sandwich boards. I have photographs of them that I'd like to show you. And then I have a, sort of a separate question, if that's okay. Can I just?
Can you give us those four dates? Because I only have three listed here, so I wonder if we-
Yeah, that's what I feared. Here, um-
Okay.
The fourth one is the Messiah thing, which is the second one is used. And I'll create another form with all the dates.
Okay. And so that's for December eighteenth also.
That's right. And you can see the display dates of our sandwich board. The display dates would be December fourteenth through the eighteenth. So we try to put them up for a few days. And all of our venues have approved this, and we've worked with them for years. The other question I have for you is, we have a second sandwich board that is slightly larger, same idea. And the question is, are there ever permitted spots on town property for this sort of thing? I really, I'm not knowledgeable about that. Maybe Noonan Park, or near the library for a second sign. Do you have thoughts on that, or is there some other procedure?
Have you read the sign policy, where you go before the sign approval board, only because it, part of that has to do with sizes, and I'm not sure of the size?
Well, my question's more specifically about public property. Is there some rule against that, like a park?
Oh, I would say that if it's the library, you would have to get permission from the library to put it on their space. But any other public property, you would come before this board, so you're in the right place.
Okay, so the best procedure is to create, is to fill out another form and come and present that, or can we talk about it now?
Well, it says to approve, oh, this is to approve the variance.
Right, this is a variance for the sandwich board signs.
Right. What is the size of that?
Which comes from us. But the placement of them on town property, um-
That's really my question.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not even sure if I've read what the policy is.
Yeah, I think that's discouraged, but we can double check, and that could always be placed on an agenda and discussed at that time.
Okay, so my job then is to what?
Fill out a note for it.
Technically, we wouldn't be able to decide on this anyway, even if we had all information without that application, just so that it could be most efficient.
So we could have no, this is about everything.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Great job. Thank you.
So we have a motion, and a second to approve the sandwich board signs on the, for those four time periods?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I would just make a statement that with the design review, it is eight square feet. So if you have two times four here in her larger one, she definitely has the, the right size. She's within that ruling. But as far as the location is the-
That's the question.
So it's not too large, is what, what I'm saying.
Next item are for the approved annual license renewals. And you'll note that we have listed the, on our agenda, so they were also in the newspaper. This had been a request of Paula Lector, to make sure that someone reading with the agenda would know any of these issues were coming up. Do we have anybody here to speak on behalf or opposed to any of these license renewals that they know of? Okay, we will take them category by category. I also have not noticed that we have any complaints from the Police Department on these. All Alcohol Restaurant, Golden Swan Indian Cuisine, Paul Herney Golf, Pickle Jar, Quarter Deck Restaurant, and Quicksall Tavern.
Move approval. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. All Alcohol Club, the Portuguese-American Association.
Move approval. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. All Alcohol Package Store, Falmouth Food Mart and Liquor, Falmouth Family Foods, Falmouth Wine and Spirits, Cappy's Liquor, RJ's Variety and Liquors.
Move approval. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Wine and Walt Restaurant, the New Golden Dynasty Restaurant, Pizza One and Subs Two, and Seafood Sam's.
Move approval. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Wine and Walt Package Store, Jack and the Beanstalk, Savon Mark, Wooden Fall Market, and the Wild Harbor General Store.
Move approval. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Common Victory License, Cape Cod Bagel, D'Angelo's, Golden Swan Indian Cuisine, Mary Ellen's Portuguese Bakers, Min's Kitchen, Paul Herney Golf, Pie in the Sky, Pickle Jar, Quarter Deck Restaurant, and the Quicksall Tavern.
Move approval. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. The ayes have it. Entertainment licenses, Portuguese-American Association, Quarter Deck Restaurant, and the Quicksall Tavern.
Move approval. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Inn Holder, Admiralty Inn, and the Shoreways Acre.
Move approval. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Class-two used car dealers, Braga's Auto Sales, Falmouth Motor Car, Haydom Enterprises, the Getty Station, Haydom Enterprises at ninety-four East Falmouth Highway, Sandy's Auto Sales.
Move approval. Second?
Motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. And vehicles for hire, Leslie Limo, Limo.
Move approval. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. The ayes have it. And now we have all these also to sign, which will be coming down your way. Individual Selectmen's Reports. I'll start off with, yes?
We finished everything with the fee hearing?
Yes.
We finished it off? Thank you.
Go ahead and start signing those.
Sure.
First thing I want to report is that we have heard from the D.E.P. concerning our request for a full environmental review on the Steamship Authority project. They have declined to take us up on that, or on our request. And I did wanna know if this board would, they're gonna be coming before the Conservation Commission on Wednesday. And I wanted to know if you thought that it was appropriate to at least send a copy of our letter to the Conservation Commission expressing our request.
I think that's appropriate.
It's a letter we've already written, and I just, get permission from you to have it sent on to the Conservation Commission.
I would agree.
So is that something you can make sure gets sent on?
Certainly.
Second item, I just wanted to briefly talk a little bit about the town meeting this past week. There's certain things about town meeting I just think are absolutely wonderful. I think it is the democratic process working in action beautifully. I did think that the, I was dismayed by some of the tone of the meeting this year, and would love to have us as a board take a little bit of either responsibility or some proaction we can take in the future. And I'd love to have a discussion in the next month or so about what kind of outreach we as a board can do, whether it was people did not feel informed enough, communicated enough from us, but what we might be able to do. And so I'm gonna put that on our agenda for a future discussion. And so if you can do some brainstorming and thinking about it, chatting with people as to how we might be able to take more of a leadership role in that, I think that, I would like to have us do that.
I think that's a great idea.
Any other items in the individual selectmen's report?
Well, I would just like to suggest perhaps that to have on our agenda another time. I know we did the fee hearings tonight. I have never seen a fee hearing go in such a short amount of time. Usually, they take over an hour, because usually, there are more fee increases, but there weren't that many. But I thought it would be a good idea for us to talk about the fees that we charged in our conference. You know, it's a policy decision, and we've never really had a policy as such. We waive fees, that's our policy, and sometimes, that's not always fair. I just thought it would be helpful to have a discussion on fee hearings for nonprofits. If anybody else is interested in that discussion.
It ties into what happened from this past summer also, as to the policy we have on the use of town property and the charges we have for nonprofits. So I think it's timely that we have a- So I think it's timely that we have a conversation on that.
Before the summer.
Right. And I'll try to put that into our agenda in the first week of December.
I definitely agree with that. I think it is changed because I always ask if it's, if it isn't written there, I always ask, is this for profit? Is it out of state? Does the for-profit come from another state and come in and use our facilities? And I really think that information we should have, they should let us know that before we meet.
And also that we look at the nonprofits. I mean, sometimes a nonprofit who's really just trying to raise money for the good of the benefit of the town might have to pay $300. And rather than us looking at it on a case-by-case basis and do waivers, I think we should just have the discussion and bite the bullet and decide what we're going to do.
Okay. We'll put that into our December agenda.
And on that point, Falmouth Art Market gave the town, Falmouth Cultural Council, $2,000.
Yeah. And we charged them how much to be at Gascanti? I don't remember.
Good topic of discussion.
Not a lot, but I remember last year the Falmouth Art Council Market didn't happen. And two years ago, they didn't make enough money here to be able to, I think even, they were, had a hard time paying what we were asking them for. I think it's interesting that Gascanti, that they did well enough that they had money in the bank to be able to give to the cultural council, so.
Good topic to look at.
Good location.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other selectmen's, individual selectmen's report? Mr. Patterson?
Okay, did you?
Go ahead.
Just to report on a few things. I attended the Friends of Knott's Cove Light Meeting almost a month ago now and Julian probably can add more to this, but the lease agreement with the Coast Guard is moving forward and the memorandum of understanding is getting pretty close to finalized. And I can tell you that that group is chomping at the bit, already doing some preliminary fundraising, looking at getting an architect in and giving them some estimates as a basis for applying for grants. So that effort ought to be moving forward very quickly when the dates open up and we finally get signed documents done. Enjoyed participating in the Historic Preservation Alliance celebration at Highfield Hall and really announcing the receipt of the 501(c)(3) designation from the IRS. IRS, excuse me. Internal Revenue Service.
It's not revenue.
So they're, they're ready to start doing things like actually holding preservation, historic preservation restrictions as an organization and also some proactive efforts to make sure that some of our historic properties don't get demolished for commercial purposes or other, or mansions or whatever. Was fun to actually go to one of the CPC project celebrations at the West Falmouth United Methodist Church. The historic doors that were on it have now been replaced and they look really nice. And it is certainly an historical building and adds to the, you know, the culture and ambiance of that West Falmouth area. So it was a nice, a nice event to go and, and nice to see our tax dollars being used for that kind of restoration. And I would just mention that I've been in France a few times and many times the small Catholic churches that you see in the various villages, actually, the connotations that dwindled to such small size is that now the French government basically has made responsibility of municipalities to actually maintain those buildings, not, no longer the responsibility of the Catholic Church, but actually of the municipality. So this is really what we're doing here in an incremental kind of way. And our community preservation committee, vets these projects to make sure that we're getting the right kind of bang for our buck, so to speak. It was nice to go to the Falmouth Police Department, new officer and doctor nation, seven new officers added to the force and also recognition of officers through awards for various things that were done above and beyond, the sort of the normal, everyday responsibility. Also, nice to hear Chief Dunn announce that he's now at a full force, 58 officers doing police and detective work. So we're finally up to full staffing, if you will, for police work. So a nice little status report as well. Attended the Veterans Day breakfast and also the Veterans Day ceremony that was held at the Falmouth High School auditorium. And I, first of all, for the breakfast, a shout out really to Bill Zamber and his wife for hosting that along with Sam Maruso and his wife and family, I should say, at Cape Cod Aggregates for actually providing the funds to actually carry it out. Both venues were packed and it really is a neat thing. I shared that with my wife and she has colleagues from basically Taunton all the way out to P-Town and they basically were amazed. But Falmouth really, I think, has done a good job of recognizing the contributions of the veterans that live with us and showing our appreciation. And these events were terrific, so. And the last thing was something that Sue and Pat attended with me as well, but that's the Cape Cod Selectmen's Association meeting just this past Friday. It's tough getting there after town meeting letting out at 11:40 and.
Really tough. 7:30 a.m.
Getting to Brewster by 7:30 a.m. But it was, the topic was on the opiate addiction and efforts around Cape Cod by various communities to try to do something to mitigate the impact to families and friends, work colleagues, the businesses that rely on people for employees. And I was very heartened to hear that, you know, particularly Jim Cummings as sheriff, basically saying, we have to look at this as kind of a mental illness, you know? And he basically said, we can't blame people for getting stuck in these situations. This is really almost a genetic predisposition and we need to start embracing them and providing the relief that's needed to mitigate the problem. And so that's really the effort. And it was not just Sheriff Cummings saying that, but other police departments and police chiefs, as well as our own Chief Dunn, basically, you know, saying, we've got to take a fresh, open look at this. And I hear the same thing coming out of Charlie Baker, our governor. So I'm somewhat optimistic. I mean, it's a problem that's never going to go away, but I think what we need to do is focus on minimizing the impact particularly to families and the children who, you know, go to school carrying that burden with them. So I'll just mention that as well. So, sorry.
Well, just to add on a little bit to that, the police chiefs from Welfley and Truro were there and they've, they've been working very diligently in their communities and they're actually doing pretty much the same thing we're doing here, where a police officer takes a clinician when they visit the homes. And they're doing more and more home visits when they find that someone has overdose. And that's what's happening here in Falmouth as well. A police officer goes with a clinician to, to the degree that that's possible to do that. And I think that kind of brings it more together. So it's, it's a Cape-wide effort and pretty much police officers in the towns are doing, are doing the same thing. And I think Beth Albert was there, who's the Director of Human Services for the county. And they have the, she, she sort of provides the, the structure for the coalition, for the Cape Coalition, dealing with drug abuse around. And she has done some, was actually able to gather statistics. She has somebody, her name is, I want to say Vera, who's a very, very competent tech person. Let me, she knows how to do studies and gather data more than, more than anybody I know. And they have gathered all the information Cape-wide on drug use, town by town and the Cape as well. And they're working off that data. The committee that's chaired by Cheryl Bartlett, who is now the former public health, state public health director. So it's really a whole Cape-wide effort and police munitions, Cape Cod healthcare, county, everybody working together to do what they can because it's a really serious issue everywhere. That's it for me.
Ms. Murphy?
Well, I think I did all the Veterans Day and I certainly acknowledge the number of people. I don't know how they could have fit anymore in the Kudumesset. And, and I thought the program at the high school, I know it's really nice when we go to the library and I also like that, but I thought the way they shifted that so quickly. And there was something about being at that high school and being contained, so to speak. And I thought it was a great program there that they did very quickly, so it was good.
Well, I think by being in close quarters like that, you have to talk to the people next to you. And there seemed to be a lot more camaraderie of people somehow even talking to one another, which you don't do on the library lawn because it's a little more distant, I guess, than it is in, in the auditorium. Not that I'm suggesting it be there, but it was a great opportunity so that we didn't miss it because of the weather, that we were able to have it somewhere where it could take off. So it was great.
I liked it inside.
It was nice to sit down.
It was.
For two hours.
That's right.
Mr. Sissoko, Tom Anderson's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, just a couple items. I do want to thank the board for your great support and assistance during the just completed November town meeting. Very much appreciated. Obviously, I appreciate it very much. I can assure you that department heads do as well for all your extraordinary support of our many initiatives. We have much to do and greatly appreciate the appropriation by town meeting of the resources necessary to proceed in multiple areas, so we thank all for that. Also, just a reminder, the comprehensive review of the fiscal year '17, departmental budget requests is underway and much to be done there and budget to be assembled and which I'll be bringing to the board in the month of December. So we look forward to that. It's always a much anticipated process and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Anything else?
Maybe just a quick mention, follow-up on Veterans Day. I mean, there was a, I can't remember his name, but there was a war hero really from Falmouth.
Ron Tashere.
Thank you. Who received the.
Silver Star.
Silver Star, which is the second or.
Third highest.
Highest possible. So that's just really amazing. And even more impressive, when he got up to receive the award, he really spent most of the time thanking his buddy and talking about his buddy's accomplishments. So it was just an incredible example of, of, you know, what it, what military service is really like. I mean, he just personifies it.
And when he asked everyone to thank God bless America.
I think that was, that was.
I thought that was the best.
That was good.
What an incredible guy.
Mm-hmm.
Very powerful.
Excuse me, do we have a meeting with the planning board on a Saturday?
Yes.
In December?
December 12th.
December 12th? And is it running all day or?
We expect it to be in the morning.
In the morning?
December 12th.
Okay.
That was set with the planning board, the last time you met with them, back on September 22nd.
I just.
So.
So it's December 12th and it's on a Saturday morning?[1750.54]